Okay, good evening, gentlemen. I'm gonna call the October 11th, 2021 Vicksburg Planning Commission DDA meeting to order. Secretary deBolt, if you could take attendance for us, please?
Schenkel.
Present.
Mutcha.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Newman. Cox.
Present.
Wurtella.
Present.
Holmes.
Yes.
And DeBolt. We have a quorum.
Alright, so we need to make some changes here, real fast, to our agenda. So we do need to add in here approval of the agenda. And in that, we need to move up Agenda Item Number 7, Member Comments, to Agenda Item, let's see here.
If it can be public comments, and then add four minutes.
Oh, sorry.
This was my fault, I just used a wrong one.
I was looking at the wrong one.
Old tablet in this, so I apologize for that.
Yep. Apologize, I was looking at member comments, but we need to move public comment up to, right after approval of minutes here. So, we're going to add Agenda Item Number 3, Approval of the Agenda, which will push Approval of Minutes to Everything Down 1. And then we'll add in, we'll move Public Comment to Number 4. So hopefully that's clear to everyone. I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight with those recommendations.
Move to approve the agenda as revised.
Motion by Wurtella, support?
Support by Manchester.
Manchester, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I trust that everyone has had time to review the minutes from the last meeting. I'll ask for any comments, corrections, such and so forth. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 13th of 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting.
Motion by Holmes, support.
It's Cox, I support.
Supported by Cox. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We will open it up for member comment at this time. We have one, I'm sorry, public comment. We have one public member present. Thank you. Are we doing online comments?
We do not do online comments, but it is being streamed online, with viewership online, but... People could always email us, and we could make their comments, but they certainly can watch it. We'll also be sending out an email with a link Alex has put up on a couple different public postings, how to watch all of our governmental meetings. And it was suggested to me that we'll send it out to the Council, Planning Commission, and Parks and Rec, then they can distribute that link to their friends, and we can get more information out. Because if people subscribe to the YouTube page, they'll get a notification of all of our government meetings.
Great, thank you for that, Manager Mallory. Next Agenda Item is the Manager Report, so I will kick it over to you for the infrastructure update.
Sure, well, obviously last week, we ran into a little bit of weather, but today, quite a bit of movement. As the next couple days, hopefully we're expecting some rain tonight, but hopefully that's limited in its impact. But in the next couple days, you should see a fairly significant movement on cement. So all of our curbs, the fill-in on non-colored sidewalks, where they'll be completed certainly by the end of this week, within five business days after that, we're anticipating on Prairie Street, the base coat of asphalt being put down. Anyone watching Main Street especially, I mean, they've already, all of our underground utilities are done on Main and Prairie, so now it's road build back. So they've got that about 60 feet south of the Prairie Foot, Prairie Street intersection now, and you'll see that go pretty quick, so. And I think once the curbs show up on Prairie Street, people will see the outline of downtown with twice as big of sidewalks and the bump-out areas and that, so. Pretty exciting time, just having good thoughts that we aren't impacted by the weather here, especially in the next 10 days, so.
What's the anticipated timeline completion again?
Well, we'll, completion on the entire project won't be done until June of next year. But we should certainly be, our plan is to be out of downtown well before construction season closes in 2021, and that's a complete put-back. We are having, we have a meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock, we're having discussions, do we put out, you know, late November, early December, the furniture, or do we wait to put that out in the spring? We did have a Christmas in the Village Committee meeting, and that's moving forward, that we... The Council does want to have the Christmas in the Village again, so we're looking forward to that, that's moving forward, and we certainly have told the contractors, we want that area in shape to have that event.
Great, thank you. Agenda Item Number 5, the Planning Director Update from Bobby Durkey.
The, well, if we can, we do have one action item.
Yeah, I think that's what we, that's where we're at.
Yep. So that leads us to, when we first put together the project downtown, it was pre-social district, and that we've evaluated where some of the benches and some smaller tables were originally planned to be, but we want to take full advantage of...
Jim, just real fast, we're on the Future Planning Commission Action Items. It's right above that action item. On the printed version, it's 4B, but it's technically 5B with our amended agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Is it?
No, I'm with you now, you said 5, so I just jumped right to 5. I'm out of the gates, ready to go.
Alright, Mr. Durkey. Can share with us your Future Planning Commission Action Items.
Village, the staff is going to be presenting a rezoning of the McGowan Seacord Funeral Home. It's currently made up of three parcels, being the funeral home, unaddressed parcels, the parking lot, and there's a house there currently. This is two reasons for the staff is going to present this rezone. Number, number one is probably for a while now, at least last year, Jim and I have talked about, there's a number of blatant non-conformities in the village, such as the Shell gas station, Fink's Market, they're both zoned residential, single-family, and the funeral home is part of this. We've never taken any action on that, and then earlier this year, the funeral home reached out about proposed expansion. So looking at the larger picture, I recommended that they pursue the rezoning, but since this was already being targeted, this is going to be a staff-driven rezoning, and they're going to be following up soon after, probably in December or the following month for site plan review. So I'll have a staff report prepared for you guys to review, and all the information, the staff support for the decision, and more information, such as maps and notices, should go out pretty soon here. So just wanted to get you guys aware of that coming, so you could start taking a look at codes or the project, and get some ideas from there.
What was the timeline that you were anticipating that coming to this body?
Planning Commission in November, Village Council in November, and then Site Planner Review December or later.
Okay.
Bobby, are there other sites across the village that would be advantageous for the Council or Commission to look at while you're presenting this one as well, or is staff not at that point yet? Only asking because if we're already reviewing one, would it be more advantageous to have role in others that would need to be amended and addressed currently? So it's all one report instead of piecemealing it?
I don't think we would be ready to take on the additional noticing and all of that, especially being village-driven. Perhaps in early '22, Jim and I haven't exactly had time to kind of lay out that timing, so. I would be fine to kind of highlight some of these as a non-action item, some of the ones that have been, you know, looked at over time that need to be, or should perhaps be rezoned to be conforming. And I'll also add, there is a residential unit in the funeral home on the second floor. So it takes it from, you know, currently, the expansion wouldn't be permitted, so instead of seeking a variance, staff seeking the rezoning.
And a couple other things, so this board is aware that's going on. We noticed to complete the codification work that's in front of the Council on November 1st, that's been publicly noticed. On November 15th, in front of the Council, would be the PUD ordinance. So that will be noticed to complete that task. And what brought this to the, as Bobby was saying, we're targeted all this for really going into the spring of '22, was the inquiry on a site plan review for a parcel that we knew was non-conforming, so. So those are, and there's a couple other items, I think, in the next four to six weeks that'll come to light that's taken up staff's time.
If I could add a comment regarding the funeral home expansion, I had an opportunity to talk with Steve McGowan regarding this, and this is actually seen as a very positive step for his business, as we know he's expanded in other communities. And for those of us that have been in the local chapel, it's limited. It's basically a 100-year-old plus house is what it is, it's been converted into a funeral home. For those of us that have been in the community for a while, there used to be another one just down the road that is presently a house. And so there, it was common in the community for this to happen, but the point being that I'm excited for Steve, I'm excited for his staff and for the community, because this is going to enable him to have much larger congregations than he can today. And I think it's going to enable us on that corner there to really, you know, for him to develop it out and have a really nice business and property that we shall be proud of in the community. So I just wanted to share that with the Council, or with the Planning Commission, I guess. Some good things, though, I think are coming, though.
And I don't know if I made it clear, the three parcels are, the funeral home is the parcel, the parking lot, and there is currently a vacant dwelling at 114 East Park Street. So the rezoning would include the 114 East Park Street, which essentially squares off the funeral home property, and then directly, you know, there is an alley along that property line. So just some thoughts about the surrounding residential.
One quick question, there will be notifications sent out ahead of time for neighbors and stuff like that, correct?
Every home or property within 300 feet, then publish in the paper.
Yeah, and so you're aware, the emails all prepped to go for publishing tomorrow, as well as the list of the people within the 300 feet. So I anticipate the letters being mailed out before week's end, and I think the publishing is scheduled for the 20-something of October, so it meets a 15-day requirement there.
Bobby, with that, if this gets presented to the Council and to the zoning board, would this all just become one parcel then, instead of three parcels?
That would be a recommendation for Site Planner Review, not for the rezoning. And in early discussions, they're probably going to do that, so. But yeah, for the sake of the review, for Site Planner Review, area calculations, all that stuff, it's all going to be viewed as one parcel to be combined, they're all under the same ownership right now.
Any further questions or comments for the Planning Director? Thanks, Bobby.
You're welcome.
Alright, Manager Mallory, you want to continue with your action item on the tables there? Yes. On, like you said, when we first had the design done for downtown, one element that wasn't in place was the legislation that allowed for a social district. So since that occurred, as well as the Village of Vicksburg putting in place a social district, we've looked at how to best use the area downtown to create an inviting hangout area with walkability and that. We've identified both the pop-outs at Liberty Lane on Main Street, as well as the one that will be in front of the Hideaway in China 1, as an area that we can place up to four 46-inch tables with built-in seats. The four seats that are built in would be ADA compliant. So we're looking at doing that, but it would be outside the scope of the project. So what the action item is tonight is to approve, it is in the downtown development area, with the main emphasis on the businesses downtown and creating a hangout, would be to approve an amount not to exceed $9,000 on the purchase of the tables. It would also include, we already have 7,500 that was approved through the budget process on the streetscapes. Just the additional 2,500 would be transferred from the Economic Development Fund to the streetscape department fund, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, can you give an idea where specifically they're going, I mean?
Yeah, and if you look, and you're starting to see the shape of Prairie Street now, but from the building's edge, 50, basically in front of the Hideaway and China 1. It starts on both sides of those, but it's, I think, 59 feet 10 inches in length, parallel to the street. And then at the top, coming out into the street, is just shy of 31 feet. So it's quite a square foot area that would be, that originally had four benches in the area. Instead, we want to move it to tables for seating within the social district. We had the original plans called for either two or four large planters, but we've increased that just for a barrier into the traffic. But again, people are going to see, it's going to be a lot different look on Prairie Street, where before there were about 21-foot to each traffic lane. Those have been reduced to 11 feet on each side, which environmentally slows the traffic downtown considerably. So that's one area. The second area is Liberty Lane, which crosses mid-block on Main Street, and Main Street will be a one-way going south. Comes out as well substantially there at the midpoint, with the larger area being on the east side of Main Street, that would fit four tables. The original plans had four tables and a couple benches, but the tables were 24 inches. We're moving two of those tables to the opposite side on Liberty Lane West, on that bump-out, and then two will be placed and utilized in the Oswalt Park redesign. In the benches, there'll be additional benches placed down by curvies and that, so there'll be... Everything that has been ordered within the project will certainly be in place. But for these tables, we're speaking of tonight, in front of the Hideaway and China 1, and then in front of Liberty Lane East.
Quick question, Jim, are these going to be more like a permanent-type table or something? I just got a little bit of concern, people might be, you know, you get to social district and go, and people are going to be dragging them over to set up their own little...
No, they'll be bolted into this, non-movable.
What kind of material are they, Jim?
They're from Forms and Services, and because we can get the contractual price that we received for... And they're, they'll be black to match the other, and the material is a stainless steel tabletop, which will be powder-coated finish. And it's die-cast aluminum frame with a, I believe, it's not on this page, but I believe it has a 20-year warranty. And it's commercial grade, so.
Jim, they'll match the existing tables that are in Liberty Lane now?
No, they'll be the color, those tables were not from the order.
But the color will be the same.
The color will be the same, yes.
That's what's concerned, just the colors will be the same.
Yep, color will be the same, black. All the streetlights will be black, except the two that were in Liberty Lane East, because of the wiring underground where it was located.
So Jim, just to clarify, there's $7,500 that's already been approved for streetscapes. And staff is asking that we transfer an additional 2,500 from the DDA Economic Development Fund?
Correct, what we have under, when we combine the DDA and Planning Commission, is within the bylaws, a limit was set at $1,000. So even though the 7,500 was approved through the budget process, we still come back, once we're going to execute that, for an additional approval from the board. We know now that that 7,500 will, the eight tables will certainly be close to 7,500 and a little bit more, and we're, the shipping's the unknown variable. So that's where, instead of, when we can anticipate a budget amendment, we'd rather do it now instead of waiting until the third or fourth quarter. So that's like the secondary request, is to move that 2,500 from an economic development code to the streetscape code.
So, you know, I don't have in front of me the line items for the budget. I'm assuming that we're, everything's fine with transferring $2,500 from that line to the other line.
You mean the balances?
Right.
Yeah, the, yeah, we haven't expensed anything out of the streetscape fund, so the entire 7,500 is there, and out of the economic development, the total fund was $16,750, and so far in this fiscal year, we've expensed $103.
Jim, one question. In realizing this is a good idea, and we're trying to enhance what, all the good that we're doing downtown, I'm just curious to what extent has or hasn't there been, as things are developing, again, additional consideration where, hey, you know, there could be something here or something there? Is that, I realize in government it's a little bit different in business, but I'm just curious if that, if that is part of the process, or can it happen, or can't it happen?
I think a lot of things are being looked at, I could answer a specific, I'm not sure on the something here or there. One item that wasn't planned on the original project, and since all the fundraising has occurred for Oswalt Park, we've added a request two weeks ago and confirmed it just today, Consumers Energy, to ensure that the gas is within the park where we're going to have the heat source. So when we meet, Jason Wassler and I, and Alex, but we communicated with Matt Levandowski, I believe is how you pronounce his last name, who designed downtown, and that's, those conversations led to, are we best utilizing what we know within Vicksburg as the social district and that? If that's what you're talking about above ground, yes. I, I mean, but we certainly would listen to anyone's opinion, and I think, once people see it in place, everything is designed to, for, above ground for easy additions or subtractions. Meaning, we're not going to be planting flowers into the ground, they'll be planted in plots, or pots, big ones, and those can be added or subtracted, and all of those are individually watered and can be added to and that, so. If that's, if you have a specific question or a suggestion, I...
No, I was just curious. To what extent, all of a sudden, you know, government comes up with regulations about electric cars, and we're in the middle of this process, and someone has a great idea, why don't we have? And I'm just, that's not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, throwing that out there. My point is just through the process, to what extent is there a continued improvement or discussion as it relates to the project?
On that specific topic, I'm juggling a few things, but two weeks ago, I met with EV power supplier, and initiated conversations between them and Dan Oswalt, who's doing the electric for Oswalt Park, and to put an EV unit in Oswalt Park area, but as part of that project. But to have that component in our downtown, that there'd be a charging station. Ultimately, that would be in front of the Council, but as the initial conversation took place, I took the position that we would not want it to be one as a revenue maker, but to entice people... but to entice people who have EVs to come in our downtown and, and explore those areas. And by having the charging station, we get free exposure quite a bit on the, through the internet, in that community identifying where, where we would have a, and in case my mom's watching this streaming, EV is the electric vehicle community.
Thank you.
We're, we're up to three, I'm watching it. But again, if anyone has suggestions or ideas, especially once they see this take shape, we're all ears to listen, we, I mean, our goal is to make it an incredibly cool downtown to hang out in, pedestrian-friendly, and we truly believe that this is the future for towns our size, and we'll make a difference.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the village manager to purchase eight commercial-grade outdoor tables to add to the social district area, and approve a budget amendment allocating up to two thousand five hundred from the account two four eight seven two nine to two four eight seven five zero, for a total monetary amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
We have a motion on the floor from Member Mucha, do we have support for that motion?
This is, this is Manchester, I support it.
Any additional conversation for voting? The only thing I would say is, Jim, it would be helpful just to have the budget in front of us to see those balances when we're having transfer recommendations. Secretary DeBolt, will you do, take a roll call, please?
Schenkel?
Yes.
Mucha?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Ortella?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
DeBolt?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, let's see here, we're at six, item B, and we have DDA finances by Manager Mallory.
Yeah. Well, the finances are, are all in line, and I think the total expenses for, for the fiscal year is about eighteen hundred dollars on, on a hundred and fifty-three thousand in anticipated revenue and carryover, so we're, we're more than in, in good shape. There will be, some of that hasn't hit the books, because it's, we had fifteen buildings take part in the fire protection grant program that utilizes some of this money as well, but, but that's an overall positive, positive thing that they invested in, in that, so.
It's going good, going well. Great. All right, next agenda item is member comments, do we have any comments from the commission?
This is DeBolt, just kind of let this, to approach this board, being in the DDA in the past, the DDA has always been featured as the bricks and mortar of downtown. So when the village does come to this board to request moving monies from one area to another, it's in the budget, and it's something that is always going to be improved, the bricks and mortar of the downtown to make it that much better. So in the future, this board, the village is going to come to us again, and it's going to happen again, of moving monies over, as Jim has said, anytime we can use monies outside the general budget, keeps the general budget low, and that's what the money has been put into the DDA, so that we can make our town a better place for people to come and enjoy time, so, that's.
I have a question for Mr. Durkey. Can you provide an update, and forgive me if I can't remember this, but the re-codification, where do we stand on that, was that wrapped up? I can't remember, so I'm just wondering if you can provide us with an update.
I believe it's ready to go to council in November.
Correct, it's been noticed and then published, and it'll be adopted, anticip, November first, it's on the agenda next, or for November first. I'm actually trying to think, it, it, it's either November first or October eighteenth, with the council meeting after the codification will be the PUD ordinance. And it is November first, because it's published, I think we just received today, October fourteenth.
So, yep, it's going right to council as it was presented, I think it had been late twenty twenty, went to Planning Commission and Council, and the adoptions and ordinance itself, so that was the, the notice, and I hadn't had a chance to coordinate with Jim on timing yet.
Thank you. Any other member comments? I want to say thanks to Mr. Lee, behind the scenes, what you don't see is a gentleman with headphones on, focused intently on a screen, have no idea what he's doing over there, but he's making this a successful evening for us, so thank you.
Can I add one thing, and I don't know, it's, we finalized it through the council, but I think it highlights also the community, and Mr. DeBolt's comments made me think, today we began a process of, in partnership, the Vicksburg Foundation approached us and approved fifty-six thousand dollars to be distributed, so we created, distributed to businesses impacted specifically in our construction zone. So we created a grant process that had four level, had four criteria mainly to demonstrate the impact, and then four levels of monetary awards, so twenty-one businesses will be recipients of either between a thousand and forty-five hundred dollars each, depending upon their impact in the construction zone, and I just think it highlights a small community. There's other communities not too far away that have, have used an available resource of assessments, but the council, from minute one throughout this entire infrastructure, wanted to limit those impacts on our business, community, and citizens, so I, and we started the process of delivering those checks today, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Last chance for member comments. All right, time is seven thirty-four, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, thank you, everyone.